Good, so I sit here, I push that button, and I just wait for no reason. That's great. All right, good morning. Going to go ahead and call order the meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, July 7th. We will begin this morning with the flag salute led by Supervisor Holmes. Please stand with us.
Thank you Supervisor Holmes. And Ann, if you would, please read the statement of meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, July 7th, 2015. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under "public comment." When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. All right, we will move on to our consent calendar. There are any items on consent any board member wish to have removed for discussion. Seeing none, any members of the public wish to have any consent item removed before the board acts on the consent calendar, then hold. All right, we have a motion on consent.
Move the program.
The motion Montgomery and second Holmes, roll call please.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Duran?
Hi.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Um, Ann? I'm yes to.
What?
Hi.
Sorry.
All righty then. That's all right, it's all good. This is the time for public comment when any member of the public can address the board on any item that is not on our agenda, knowing that the board cannot take action on those items raised under public comment. As you step forward, please try to limit your comments to three minutes and identify yourself if you would please. Good morning, Mr. Shear.
Good morning, thank you. My name is Walt Shear and I'm with the Ad Hoc Committee that's working to save the Loomis Library, and I wanted to just come and give you a quick update on where we are. I realize my communications have probably been a little short, so I do want to thank you for the time that any of you have spent with us here so far. We're progressing through our work plan on schedule and see no problems with achieving the end goals of that work plan. We're gathering background data and very busy surveying the community. We're a very low-key stage of the work plan right now, so you don't see a whole lot in the news or anything like that, but I just want you to rest assured we are progressing through it and anticipate delivering your product on time. Okay, so, anything, and please feel free to call me if you have any questions, any concerns, and I will be trying to meet with you all one-on-one sometime in the near future to touch bases with you and see if you have any specific concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Bob Rich. I just wanted to introduce myself. I am the new Executive Director of Placer Arts, and I appreciate your support over the years and this coming year with the enhancement, and I look forward to working with the supervisors and the other county officials.
Thank you very much for introducing yourself. You're welcome. Anybody else under public comment?
Well, then I guess it's my turn.
Thought you were going to get away with it, right? Sorry, I was a little bit late. Good morning, my name's Kelly Moretti. I reside in Truckee in the Placer County portion. I work in Granite Bay. First out, Placer Fire. I'm here representing the six local fire agencies to attempt to get some Prop 172 money. I wanted to introduce myself and say good morning. We appreciate that you guys were giving more money to Cal Fire to maintain Station 182 in Dry Creek. I know that's not an easy thing to do. We'd like you to consider helping to fund our local districts to help replace some of the funds that were taken away through ERAF. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Me, me. Vice Chair Wygant, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Kirk Euler. It's my pleasure to stand before you this morning in recognition of Ann Holman and her service to the Board of Supervisors. You see, we had to do this a bit surreptitiously because as Ann does actually control our agenda, if we'd actually put it on the agenda, she wouldn't be here. She would have beat a hasty retreat if she'd known that we were going to do this to her. So, Ann, it is with great pleasure that I get to read this commendation recognizing your 35 years of service to Placer County, and today is Ann's last meeting as our clerk of the board. So, we wanted to recognize Ann for her service by pointing out that clearly Ann has skillfully served Placer County in the Board of Supervisors for over 35 years. She was originally hired, to give you an idea how long 35 years ago actually was, originally hired as a stenographer too in the Personnel Department. Did you still have that ability, any of that stenography stuff? You just do it that way? Not, all right, if you can do it, good for you. That's a marketable skill in retirement, I'm sure. Stenographer too through the Personnel Department in 1977. She was promoted to Senior Stenographer in the County Clerk Board of Supervisors office later that year, and then Assistant Clerk of the Board in 1997. Ann, in intervening years, skillfully provided support to the Agricultural Commission, Administration and Purchasing, Revenue Services, and returned to the Clerk of the Board in 1987. Her roles and responsibilities and legal requirements of the board have become increasingly complex, requiring great attention to detail. The county has relied upon Ann's experience and depth of knowledge of those requirements, including the Brown Act, public records requests, requirements for public hearings, and posting agendas and public notices. Ann has adeptly and meticulously maintained records of the county's actions, including thousands of resolutions, not this one though, and ordinances while increasing accessibility to those records to staff and to the public. County has relied upon Ann to deliver the agenda on time and now in advance, and having seamlessly moved up the agenda availability two days before the Brown Act requires posting. Ann's calm demeanor and composure in meeting those obligations is clear and admirable, particularly when faced with the myriad issues surrounding delivery of the board's agenda, including addressing late items, changes in items, incorrect items, varying direction requests regarding those items, chairman who gets a bit schizophrenic from time to time. Ann's depth of knowledge, sense of purpose, reliability, and work ethic have been instrumental in her success in this position. Now therefore let it be known that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer commend and thank Ann Holman for her years of service to the Placer County Board of Supervisors. She says, "No, I'm not saying anything." I said, "You're ready to get it." Here, you hold that. No, I'm not saying anything.
I said no to them.
All right, you sure you don't want to say anything?
Thank you all. It's been wonderful. Thank you.
Chairman Euler?
Yes, ma'am.
I may, I would like to say something. One of the things that you all can't tell from the audience is very often as Ann is reading the board procedures, she and I catch each other's eye and we have to try womanfully not to crack each other up, because one of the things that I love about Ann is as well as the fact that she does her job impeccably and provides incredible support to us, is she also has just a fabulous sense of humor. And I will miss you, and I hope to see you often in your retirement.
Supervisor Wygant, your turn.
Hey, I didn't realize that you had the same thing with Jennifer that you did. Actually, just, when you're up here, you know, sometimes you get a little bored or something, you know, reading those procedures again and again. Ann and I also could not make eye contact because we would both start laughing. But for the public, maybe some of the audience members, most people probably don't understand the incredible responsibility that goes with Ann's job as Clerk of the Board. There are intense legal ramifications to make sure we notice everything properly and then record it properly and have it available. And so, it's been great working with you for 20 years in my case. Always have a bright attitude and a great sense of humor and have done a solid job for us, so thank you, and again, don't be a stranger.
Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, I too, done my best to, with the eye contact and my funny, but no, no response whatsoever. So, I did my best too, I just want to let you know. And Ann, we're going to miss you, and I'm sure we'll see you in the area, but thank you for all of your service. Good, all right. Well, thank you so much for all that you've done for Placer County.
All right, thanks again, Ann, for everything. Okay, we're going to move on to Supervisors' committee reports. Any Supervisors have anything they wish to report under committee reports? Seeing no lights, fire up, we'll go ahead and move on to our 9:05 timed item. This is a publicly noticed commendation that will be presented by Supervisor Wygant to Mary Dietrich in recognition of her years of service to Placer County. So, Mary, would please come on forward?
Thanks, Mary. So, another one of us who've been kicking around here for a while, but I get the privilege of reading your commendation. So, whereas Mary Dietrich provided 31 years of exemplary service to the county of Placer and the citizens who are positioned with Public Works, Planning, and the Department of Facility Services where she served 25 of those years, whereas Mary created the Property Management Division and formalized its leasing program that culminated with the Home Depot in Auburn, during her tenure as the crowned Duchess of DeWitt, Mary was known for her ability to orchestrate solutions and embrace controversial issues, becoming known for excellent customer service through her division of Last Resort. Whereas in her capacity as Deputy Director, Mary forged relationships and leveraged expertise to develop the long-term vision of preserving public access to county beaches at Lake Tahoe. Mary also championed program for intriguing property acquisitions, including the Bill Santucci Justice Center, Heritage Plaza in Tahoe City, and Hidden Falls Regional Park, my personal favorite. Whereas acknowledging her vast experience and keen political acumen, Mary was promoted to Assistant Director in 2013, Executive Director for the Western Placer Waste Management Authority. Mary led with great vision and purpose developing an enduring legacy of service and commitment with a sense of pride in a culture of collective ownership. Whereas Mary truly worked on an open-door basis, investing countless hours mentoring, training, and counseling for her team. She will be missed for her contagious energy and the sound of her clicking heels as she sprinted the halls. Whereas Mary is an active member of her community, tireless service extends to the Salvation Army Advisory Board, she enjoys the outdoors, water skiing, golf, and gardening. Mary shows great pride and joy in her extended family and her longtime partner, Vince Kimbrel. Therefore, it be resolved, Board of Supervisors on behalf of the citizens of Placer County acknowledge with great appreciation Mary's exceptional service and extend our sincere wishes to both her advance for fulfilled retirement and great success in their future. Thank you, Mary. And then personally, before I come down here, it's been great working with you. I think as I read that and think back and as with Ann, the incredible, the county organization is, you know, virtually a completely different organization than it was even when I got here.
Absolutely.
And getting into the business of open space preservation like Hidden Falls Park, but when I came here, I don't think there had been a county office structure constructed since about 1970. Unfortunately, it was this place. But you did just a stellar job of launching us into helping manage all of that and adapt to changing issues sometimes, so, and it's been just fun working with you in addition to that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
years. With Ann being a stenographer, I remember the first computers, the first fax machine that was in the Department of Public Works, and just in thinking about my time here, it seems like it was kind of a golden age. We've gone from, you know, really sort of manual processing to really state-of-the-art, and I'm so proud to have been part of that. I think that I can look at so many of the projects that happened in the county and know that I had at least a little part of it. I worked with just the best colleagues and boards and executive officers to help all of that happen, and I think that Placer County is just a leader in all that we do, a visionary. I remember when we had the Health Department and the Welfare Department, and now we have Health and Human Services with just its leadership and recognition throughout the state. And so, I'm just so proud to have been part of this, to have met great friends, wonderful colleagues, and look forward to my retirement now. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mary, before you run away, a couple Supervisors have some comments.
So, I wanted to say thank you for the time that we were able to work together, you know, fairly short-term in terms of your tenure at the county, but, you know, you were always, in the time that we served together, and I'm sure before, an exemplary employee. I would often call Mary 8:00, 8:30 at night, thinking that I was going to leave a message on her answer machine, and she would pick the phone up because she was still at her desk, serving the people of Placer County. And your commitment to the county as an organization, but the county as an entity filled with people, was absolutely unsurpassed, and it was an absolute joy to work with you. And I have never seen you looking so rested and relaxed, and I'm very jealous. Whatever you've got, share it with the rest of us.
Well, when you're retired, you get to get out a little bit more than otherwise.
Thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
Supervisor Holmes? I too, Mary, want to thank you for all your service, and it's been a joy to work with you as well. But I did want to point out to everyone, the exemplary service you give to the Salvation Army Advisory Board over the years as a secretary, keeping the minutes, coming to keep, you know, 16 people online and getting those meetings run through. You've done a tremendous job for the Salvation Army, and that needs to be recognized as well, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
And that was really the same comment that I wanted to make, is you have committed yourself over your 30-plus years of service to Placer County, but more importantly, you've always been committed to the community. And realizing that while serving in the capacity as you did in Facility Services, having to, you know, step in and fix the train wreck that that guy Durfee left behind, you really, it was a commitment to the community and not just to Placer County, the entity. You saw the people that were being served, and you understood that that was the mission, and greatly appreciate that about you. And whatever you're doing right now, keep it up because you'll great.
Thanks. I can say it was never just a job.
No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a 9:10 timed item. I was remiss, though, in not recognizing the fact that I do see a couple of folks up in Tahoe. Don't know if either of those folks had intended to speak. Don't know if either of those folks had intended to speak under public comment. No, nothing under public comment. I apologize for not having acknowledged that earlier. So we will go ahead to our 9:10 timed item. This is our annual report from the Placer County Youth Commission.
Good morning Chairman Yuler, members of the Board, Richard Connect with the Children's System of Care. We're very pleased this morning to have for your brief review, the report from the Placer County Youth Commission. The commission members have been up to much good this year, and we're joined this morning by a few of their leaders to make their annual report. Want to celebrate the work of Kara Sutter, who's our primary HHS lead with the Youth Commission, who does much good to help them reach their goals, and we're pleased to have this report for you this morning.
Great.
Thank you for the introduction, Richard. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. We're just gonna give you a brief overview of what we've been working on this year and some of the things we're really excited to bring to you guys. I would like to note that we're gonna be open to questions from anybody at the end. I'll start off introducing myself. I'm Jack Bell. I go to Delaware High School.
I'm Catherine Softcheck, and I go Wood Creek, and I'll be a junior this year.
I'm Carly Creamer, and I'll be a sophomore at Colfax.
And with that, we'll, do we have the slideshow?
Our technology folks have a slideshow queued up for the Youth Commission.
We could do it without the slideshow.
Alright, well, why don't we go ahead and launch in, and if they're able to find whatever it is that we got, then we can, staff go scrambling.
Okay. So the first thing, we revamped our entire website this year to improve our outlook on the community and hopefully reach out to more students. We made social media pages to be more outgoing to the kids of the next generation, which are made easier to reach via social media. So that was kind of the first highlight that I wanted to bring to you guys of our year.
Another thing that we focused on last year was the plastic bag ban. At the beginning of the year, a PCYC committee evaluated the pros and cons of single-use plastic bag usage, and based on talking with and outside of our community, we decided that we supported a plastic bag ban. At the same time, a state-level bill was being debated, and it passed, but it was supposed to be implemented in July 2015. It's been postponed until a public vote in 2016.
In previous years, the commission has worked with mental health awareness and ending the stigma around mental illnesses. And so this year, I helped bring a mental health program to Wood Creek High School, and it reached over 250 kids. It was really successful. A lot of the kids said the real stories that they heard about young adults that had lived experience with some sort of mental illness really helped them in wanting to end the stigma around it. And it was brought up at a Roseville Joint Union High School District meeting, and now all the schools in the district want it every semester.
Another thing that we're, we're really excited about this year is the Social Host Ordinance, which many of you may have heard of. I'll start by giving you a brief, giving you a little bit of brief background on it. Basically, what it is, is it's an administrative fine. It's meant to hold people who provide alcohol for minors and a setting for them to drink it in accountable for their actions. It's not, you know, meant to give police additional powers. It's not a criminal charge. It's just meant to hold them accountable. And really, in a perfect world, we would hope that there's never any citations written and that we can just educate the community that binge drinking is very dangerous and it can lead to fatalities. And that's, you know, kind of our reason for being so behind this movement in Placer County. We're proud to announce that Rockland was able to pass the first, excuse me, Social Host Ordinance in Placer County. And our, one of our, one of our associates over here, Sherry Crowe, spoke with the Rockland Police Department, and they have not written any citations yet. So what that shows is that what our efforts to educate the community have worked thus far, and that they haven't had to write any yet because the, we think that the people of the community of Rockland have received the message of how dangerous it can be, and they're really, they really kind of took it to heart, and our efforts were successful. So, and I'm also proud to report that we are on the agenda for a Roseville City Council meeting on the 15th, and it's gonna be voted on, I should say, the Social Host Ordinance is on the agenda, and we're gonna go speak under public comment to the city council on that day for that meeting, when it's gonna be voted on.
Another focus we had last year was the Youth Impact Awards, which is a new thing. We hadn't done it before. And at the beginning of the year, one of our commissioners, Tyler Tate, pitched an idea to the rest of the commission to have some kind of scholarship program for youth making a difference in the community. And this would serve to decrease the negative perception of youth that many people have, as well as inspire others to make changes, and it would increase publicity for the commission itself. So we created five awards categories and picked a name and a logo for the award ceremony, withheld on April 26th, and there were 126 people in attendance. We awarded five different $100 scholarships, and we'd also like to extend a special thank you to Supervisors Duran and Holmes for attending and being honored guests and assisting with the presentation of the awards.
And on that note, we would also, we had a slide that had all of our people that we wanted to thank for this year, but since that's not up, I'll just go ahead and read it. The Placer County Board of Supervisors as a whole for supporting us throughout the year, specifically Supervisor Holmes and his aide, Ms. Leah Vasasco, for your guys' continued support and making us a priority in your guys' busy schedules. I know that was in heart, was very difficult for you guys to do, you know, because you guys have so much, so many other things you're working on, but we really appreciate your continued support, sir. To Supervisor Duran, again, for attending the youth awards, really appreciate your presence there, sir. And to the Coalition for Placer Youth, and Sherry Crowe, who works closely with them for all their support this year. And to the California Friday Night Live partnership, who really helps fund a lot of our efforts that we make to do positive, have positive change in the community. Thank you, guys, for allowing us to work on behalf of Placer County Youth Commission this year, and again, we appreciate all your support.
Thank you.
At this time, we would like to open it up for questions. If you guys have any questions about anything we've done this year, we'd be very happy to ask.
Looks like we have a couple questions or comments. We'll start down at the end with Supervisor Duran.
I just have a comment, and I just want to thank you for your participation in the program. And I also want to say that you represent the county extremely well. I am practicing attorney, and I've also, in my job, I've seen glitches happen in a courtroom where something didn't come up on the screen, and I've seen utter sheer panic from the other side, which obviously is a good thing for me. And I've also seen in here, when things don't actually work, trained professionals look like deers in the headlights. You handle that transition as if it was no big deal, and the preparation, I'm just very impressed. And I know that that, that little, that little thing right there is going to carry you through your careers, public speaking, whatever you do, and thank you again for being here.
And Supervisor Holmes?
You know, I just have to, I'm so pleased with the development of the Placer Youth Commission and the growth of its membership. It's really, really important to have young people involved. And I, in your report, you have some member reflections, and I'd like to read some of those. These are from youth commissioners about their service. "I'm able to be someone who can start a change. I learned planning is the most important part." There's an old saying, "If you fail to plan, you plan to fail." I have all my sayings, you know.
We know.
If you don't know where you're going, any road will take you there.
When you get the fork, can the road take it?
Alright, no. "I will not be afraid to speak up about problems in my community and the world." A lot of people have that challenge, and you, this is a reflection that you're able to do that. "I learned, I learned I need to be more assertive if I want to have something done. I've learned city council meetings can take forever."
You did learn that one.
But you hung in there, and I appreciate you staying at the Rockland City Council meeting. "I learned that nothing changes in the community without a catalyst. If not us, then who? The passion of the commission to really do what's best for the community. Everyone drove me to be a better leader because they deserved the best. The members of the Placer County Youth Commission are inspiring," and I have to agree with that. So anyhow, these are, this is why we have a Placer County Youth Commission, to have young people reach out and expand their ability and, and learn how to communicate in the community and government. So I just want to thank you for your service and look forward to working with you the next year. Thank you again.
And if any of you guys didn't know, Supervisor Holmes kind of headed up the Placer County Youth Commission, so thank you for making this opportunity available for youth to make their voice heard locally.
So I do have a question, and that is if each of you had to convince one fellow student to participate in this commission, how would you do it? What would you tell them?
I would tell them that there's things that we see on the news every night, or when we go to school, or just driving along the road, and we, it's easy to complain about something, or it's easy to say that this isn't right, but the Placer County Youth Commission provides an opportunity for you to actually do something about it and not just be one of those people that complains. All of you guys are here because you saw something in your community that, you know, you wanted to make a difference, a place that maybe a void that you wanted to fill, and instead of just sitting there and complaining about it, you guys found a way to make that change in your community by being on the Board of Supervisors, and it's the same thing for us. We obviously can't be supervisors yet, we're not quite old enough, but this is what we can do as high school students. So that's what I would say to them.
And I definitely say, even if you don't feel like you're a leader, this commission can definitely make you into one and help you create positive change in your life and in your friend's life and the community. It helps you grow in so many ways. You gain a lot of different knowledge on different subjects you wouldn't any other way, and it's just a really good opportunity.
I agree with Jack in that there's a lot of people talking, especially around our age, about how they don't feel listened to and how they don't have a voice, and there's no use in just standing around complaining about things, but you can come join the Youth Commission and make a difference and change the things in your community that you want to change.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you all very much for your service, and thank you for your present, oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Holmes?
Just one more comment. I just wanted to point out that one of the youth awards winners was Mason Sage, who happens to be the son of Judy Sage, who he worked for. So just wanted to make sure that that was recognized, that one of our county employees has a son that's been on the Youth Commission.
Well, doesn't fall too far from the tree.
Thank you again for your, your service to the Youth Commission. What's that?
I said, that was a, that was a good quote, a good pithy saying, he's gonna get Jim a run for his money.
Thank you, sir.
And, and for the presentation this morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to our 9:20 timed item. This is a presentation of a commendation for George Belland, presented by Supervisor Holmes. Mr. Belland, if you would please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Step forward.
Joyce and George, you want to come forward? You don't want to come up? First of all, I want to thank Jack and Valerie Sanchez for bringing this item before me, and I'm glad to be able to present this to George Belland. This is a matter of commendation honoring George Belland for his contribution to Placer County and the greater Auburn area. Whereas George Belland was raised in Valeo and moved to Auburn in 1955 with his wife, Joyce, George served two terms as the mayor of the city of Auburn in 1982 and 1986, and also served on the Placer County Board of Supervisors from 1988 to 1992. And whereas George became interested in preserving Placer County's natural resources and beauty, and worked to build momentum within the community to identify and protect streams, wetlands, and other natural areas, and he worked with other community members and local government agencies to create open spaces for people to use and enjoy. And whereas George spearheaded movements that led to the creation of Save Auburn Ravine Steelhead and Salmon, otherwise known as SARSIS, and Protect the American River Canyon, otherwise known as PARK, George was instrumental in Daylighting North Rich Ravine, which made way for the School Park Preserve in downtown Auburn, and he worked tirelessly to create a walking path along the Auburn Ravine in Auburn. And whereas during his time as a county supervisor, George Belland was instrumental in creating a Wetlands Committee and advocating for the adoption of the Placer County Tree Preservation Ordinance. George also traveled to Washington DC to speak in support of protecting the American River Canyon. And whereas those who have had the great opportunity to work alongside George Belland, praise his kindness and determination in accomplishing conservation projects that make Placer County a better place to live, and also consider him a visionary when it comes to natural resource and open space preservation. Now therefore, let it be known that the Placer County Board of Supervisors acknowledges George Belland for his years of community service and his dedication to preserving precious natural resources and open spaces in Placer County. So I'll bring this down to you, sir.
Wow, I had forgotten all that.
Well, there's lots of those.
Well, thank you very much.
And you're free to make a few comments.
Well, I'm surprised to be recognized that I did all that. I guess I've forgotten a lot about it. Thank you very much. I feel humble yet proud. Well, thank you very much for this.
Thank you, George. Alright, and our final timed item is a 9:30 item. This is the Auditor and Controller's item, however, is being presented by, not by the Auditor and Controller, but by Mr. Wayne Nair. This is the Placer County Audit Committee's annual report.
Good morning Chairman Yuler and Board members. I've had the pleasure of serving on this committee since 2008, when it was first set up, and I think it's important to recognize, when that was started, Placer County was one of the first counties to set up this committee. And I think that speaks, again, quite well of the county as saying that they are committed to transparency and the quality of the work that's done by the, by the staffs in the, in the county. So I also would like to say that I am, there are two other members to this committee, Supervisors Holmes and Duran, and I really appreciate their involvement. They're engaged and concerned as well about how all the processes are going on in the county. And I'd like to also introduce the Auditor and Controller, Andy Thith, and Cole Howard, who is the Assistant Auditor and Controller as well. I appreciate their involvement. And the other person that I want to recognize, my report's gonna be very brief. You had a report from, from the audit team, and so I've hoped you've had a chance to read that, as well as the attached documents that came with it. So I'm not gonna go through that, I'm just gonna try to highlight a few things that I think are important, and again, speaks well to the county. I would like to recognize the CEO and his staff for coming to the meeting. They don't have to come, they're not required to come, but they come. And I think that's, again, speaks very well of the county and the commitment to, to the audit functions and making sure that all the processes are working as they should, as policy, whether it's policy or whether it's fiscal matters. And I think the county can be proud of the fact that this county is in one of the best positions. When you look at the other 57 counties in this state, Placer County stands head and shoulders above a lot of the other counties. And so I think it's, it's well to recognize this, and I think it's because of, again, things like this committee who really, again, elevate this issue. So I would just would like to point that out. I think you all know, as every year I come, I kind of share with you that I have a passion for fiscal accountability. I just, it's something that's sort of ingrained in me, so again, if you pick up any enthusiasm, that's because of that. Because I do believe that audit is an efficient and objective means of verifying that policies, procedures, and fiscal processes are being adhered to. One of the things that I, again, I have issues that I want to, that are sensitive to me because of my past experience, and one of them is related to cards, whether it's credit cards, or gas cards, or prepaid cards, because I've seen in the past where those, where those kinds of abuses can happen. And so I really appreciate the audit staff, they do spot checks on a regular basis. We have verified that, you know, in the past, and I'm thinking you're fully aware of it, that there have been issues related to the Voyager card, which is what, obviously, the gassing for the vehicles. Those issues are being addressed, and I believe that there's gonna be a better accountability in how that process works going forward, so that's, that's encouraging. And again, when you have prepaid cards, and that usually is through the Health Services Department, sometimes there could potentially be, you know, things that shouldn't happen with those kind of cards, but again, the audit function- But again, the audit function has showed that that's being done in according to policy and procedure and so that that's certainly is not, not a concern at this point. But it always, always something that I take a special look at because I just want to make sure that that's being done as the way it should be. I think another thing that's really important over this last year since I last talked to you is that you have a new outside accounting firm, VTD. I've shortened it because I don't want to have to try to go through their names on their, for their firm. Anytime you bring in a new set of eyes to look at things, I think Supervisor Wygant can appreciate that as a financial guy, sometimes they spot things that maybe the other firm didn't spot. But the important thing to recognize on this year is that the new firm had no findings. And so again, this speaks really well to the quality of the products that are, that are coming out of your various departments. So again, I think you can have confidence and I believe that the, obviously, the residents of this county have, can be confident and proud of the work that's being done through these efforts. The, one thing I also want to highlight, and I talked about this a little bit last year, it is now here, the GASP, they keep adding things, and for those of you who don't know what GASP is, is Government Accounting Standard Boards, which basically set policies that municipalities have to follow in their accounting functions. Now has raised the level of accountability related to pensions and it being whether they're funded sufficiently for the future. And as you know, and even there was an article out today about how many municipalities, how many states are way underfunded in their pension plans because they've been hoarding them over the years for other purposes. County, this year, all municipalities have to start reporting. So that, at this last fiscal year that we have just, just closed recently, there will be an accounting of how each municipality stands as far as their pension funding. And the good news is Placer County's in great shape. So you're gonna see a good report as it comes out. The single audit report, which you got in with this report today, there, any of the items that they did mention are minor. Again, this relates to mostly, you know, outside funding from the feds or the state or whatever and how the reporting and how that, those funds are being handled. And as we know, there's a pretty arduous task to keep up with the reporting process of that. So there's always a little minor glitch here and there as far as reporting, but there is nothing of any substance where anything would jeopardize as far as those funds. So that's an important thing to point out. The last thing I'd like to say is GFOA, which is Government Financial Officers Association, is a nationwide organization that really kind of gathers together all of the financial people to, to help them advance in their information by a process of sharing information. And they give out awards each year for achievement awards. It's a certification of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And I don't know if you're aware, but Placer County has received that for 14 years and this last year they received it again. So again, this is, this is something I think the county could very, be very proud of and certainly the staff can be very proud of that. And the first time Western Placer Waste Management Authority also received it this year. This is their first time, hopefully, of many. So again, I want to recognize them and what they're doing there. Because I think we know there's been a few issues in the past there, but they've certainly raised their game up and want to recognize that. So that kind of ends my remarks. If you have any questions regarding the, the report and the information that you had, staff is here to answer. And otherwise, I'll, I can try to tackle any questions you might have.
Supervisor Duran.
Yeah, thank you, Wayne. I just want to thank you for your participation and leadership in the Audit Committee. You know, the, the audit function is, is in addition to revenues and our ability to capture revenues is perhaps the most important piece of this county pot. We've got to account for all of the money that comes in. We've got, we've got to comply with grants, both federal and state, you know, and, and people judge us, you know, when we go out for credit and all these other kinds of things that we use for our resources for, they judge that in our ability of how we look in our books as to whether or not they're gonna, you know, go into business with us or give us a loan or, or bond with us. So that function is extremely important. And when a lot of folks have a tendency to say, "Well, you know, you're not transparent," this is the single most important issue with transparency is how much money we have, what we do with that money, and whether or not there's any funny business with, with the money. And, and time and time again, we've proven that, you know, our ability to, to be fiscally responsible, the foundation is here. It's in that audit. It's how we spend the money. And, and for those folks that, that are coming or will come up to the county and ask for money, the first question I'm gonna look is, what do you do? What, what do your audits show? And if your audits are a mess, why, you know, that's an indication that, you know, where there's smoke, there's fire. So I appreciate the fact it's, it's not an action-packed thing, but the people that do it are dedicated to it and it really is the lifeblood of any, of any going concern. And I appreciate participating and, and, and your enthusiasm for what, what the Audit Committee does.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate your involvement.
Supervisor Holmes.
Yeah, I, I just want to thank you for serving as the Chair of the Audit Committee. Every year you've been--
You always force me onto that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's unanimous. Make sure that you're the Chair. But the Audit Committee serves a purpose for me as well. Gives me a sense of comfort and assurance that the money is being spent and that it's being looked at, where money goes and how programs are worked. And so to Andy and Nicole, you guys do a tremendous job sharpening the pencil, making sure that everything is, and, and the report to us also, it gives us a sense of comfort. So thank you all for your service on that.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate your involvement. And Chairman Euler, if you, I neglected to mention a couple of important things. I really appreciate, again, the CEO's support of what's going on in the audit side because they obviously, like a lot of departments, have been cut back over time in staffing. And the CEO's been very supportive of staffing up and now the Audit Department is staffed up, so they're well-prepared. You will notice in that report that there's a lot more internal audits going on, so that's a good thing. That's very positive. And so I want to recognize Nicole because she manages that process for the county and does an outstanding job of making sure that we're staying on top of the various departments. So. Great. Thank you very much.
Hold on, Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, Wayne, I wanted to add to the chorus of thank yous on this and, and I'm actually gonna start with county staff because, you know, our first line of defense here in making sure that public tax dollars are spent appropriately, whether they're state, local, or federal, is our Auditor's Office. And I think you guys do just an incredible job within your own department and really keep a very close and critical eye on things and I appreciate that very much. VTD, I think they did a great job. I mean, the audit report is phenomenal. But I really want to thank you because even with those two levels, with our own staff and with an outside auditor, without folks like you who give their time as private individuals, members of the community to really look this over, whether it's here or whether in your role on the Planning Commission, we would be much worse off as a county if we didn't have folks like you stepping up and taking these roles. So I really want to say thank you.
Well, thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate those comments.
My pleasure to work with you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Nair, for your report and for your service on that committee. Okay, we will move on to our first department item. We need to flop the order though. I've been advised by council that we should probably take item 6A prior to jumping into item 5. Is that? All right? Okay, so we'll go ahead and start with 6A. Environmental Engineering Amendment Number 1 to the COJA, the Construction, Operating, and Joint Exercise of Power Agreement, City of Lincoln Midwestern Placer Regional Sewer Project. Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Bill Zimmerman, Deputy Director of Facility Services. With me this morning is Dave Atkinson. Dave is our Utility Program Manager. He's also the Project Manager for the Midwestern Placer Regional Sewer Project. Our request for you this morning is to adopt a resolution delegating authority to the Director of Facility Services or Designee to contingent upon approval by the Lincoln City Council, approve Amendment 1 to the Construction, Operation, and Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement with the City of Lincoln for the Midwestern Placer Regional Sewer Project, which, in addition to other provisions, increases the capital charge from $73,203,000 to $77,808,400 to include upsizing a portion of the regional pipeline to accommodate future flows from the City of Auburn and to an account for an inflation adjustment. Funding is provided by the City of Auburn in the amount of $2,091,100 and SMD-1 user fees in the amount of $2,514,300. The amendment was approved yesterday, by, yesterday by the Lincoln City Council, so the contingent piece of our request has been fulfilled. And at this point, I'm gonna turn things over to Dave and let him walk you through the provisions of the amendment.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board members. Our presentation today this morning is gonna be based on the attachment titled Capital Charge Breakdown, which was Attachment 3 to your Board Package, which is included on page 82 of your Board Package. This attachment provides a detailed breakdown of the changes made to the financial aspects of the COJA and that's mostly what I'll be walking through with you this morning. So starting with project management and administration, under the terms of the COJA as adopted in October of 2003, Lincoln's staff and administrative costs for managing the regional sewer project were capped at $500,000 and would be paid out proportionately with the pace of construction billings. Lincoln has requested an increase to the project management line items as their expenses are exceeding this capped amount. This amendment, as we're proposing for your approval today, structures those increases to be treated as a prepayment of the oversizing payment that Lincoln may ultimately receive at the end of the project so that the risk framework as it was originally constructed in the COJA would be preserved. This increase of $1.25 million that Lincoln has requested is being offset by a decrease in the capital contingency. Under the Construction Work Direct Item, there are three changes. The first change is to include a $2.1 million to account for the incremental upsizing of the pipeline that can serve both SMD-1 and potentially the City of Auburn in the future if they choose to connect. This $2.1 million is being paid by the City of Auburn as part of the November 2013 Funding Agreement, which is incorporated into this COJA amendment as a new Exhibit 19. This changes, this change is one of two in this amendment that increases the total capital charge for the regional sewer project. The second change to the Construction Work simply incorporates the net $474,000 in construction contract change orders that have been approved to date by the City of Lincoln as part of the regional sewer project. These and any other construction changes will be offset by deductions from the capital contingency. In keeping with Lincoln's offer and the tenants of the COJA, the oversizing contingency would be used in the event that the capital contingency was exhausted. The final change to the Construction Work Item incorporates a partnership between the regional sewer project and county roads to perform an enhanced restoration of Virginia Town Road and Fowler Roads. $497,000 will be removed from the pipeline construction contract and given to county roads for their use in an annual overlay project. This work has already been bid and will be presented to you later on this morning for your approval and hopeful award. Including these funds in the larger county projects allows for a full 3-inch pavement overlay of those two roads instead of the trench repair and slurry seal as was originally included in the contract specifications. Under contract management, Lincoln has requested an additional $1.5 million for construction management and this will be offset by a deduction from the capital contingency. Under Engineering Services during construction, Lincoln requested to move $362,000 from this item and move it to the Mitigations and Mitigation Monitoring Item. Work in both of these areas is being done by Stantech Consulting as a consultant directly to the City of Lincoln as part of the project. Under Mitigations and Mitigation Monitoring, in addition to the $362,000 moved from Engineering Services, Lincoln's requesting an additional $186,000. This increase will also be offset by a deduction from the capital contingency. Under Inspection and Testing, the county's construction inspectors have been providing inspection services in areas where the project is being constructed in county roadways. Increased impacts to the roads associated with longer than anticipated duration of construction and the city's choice to use blasting and tunneling have resulted in increases to the county's labor for the project. This increase is a not-to-exceed amount and will be offset by a deduction in the capital contingency. Under Capital Contingency, the first change is the inflation adjustment, which was specified in the original COJA, has also been added. This includes the $1 million inflation allowance, which was included in the original COJA agreement, which represents a 2% construction inflation, plus an additional $2.5 million to bring the total inflation adjustment up to the 6.9% that was actually recorded in the Engineering News Record 20 City Construction Index from February 2012 to July of 2014. This inflation adjustment results in an increase to the capital charge of $2.5 million. Changes to the capital contingency include this and all of the other changes I mentioned above and result in a net change to the capital contingency of a reduction of $6,000. The inflation allowance, as I meant, just mentioned, is no longer needed now that it's an actual inflation adjustment and has been removed and the $1 million was moved to the capital contingency. Repavement area, this is a new line item and this recognizes the agreement between the county and the project to do the enhanced roadway restoration on Virginia Town and Fowler Roads. So in summary, the capital charge, all of the above results in a net increase to the capital charge of $4.6 million. Of that, Auburn will pay $2.1 million in keeping with the funding agreement and the remaining $75.7 million will be with the responsibility of Sewer Maintenance District Number 1. In October of 2013, Sewer Maintenance District Number 1 was approved for a loan from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund with an authorized maximum amount of $76.3 million. So you, the capital charge that we're proposing to you today is below that and that that full $76.3 million figure was used when we prepared the rate increase that your board approved in May of 2013 to fund the regional sewer project. Therefore, the changes to the capital charge delineated in this amendment to the COJA can be fully funded under the existing Sewer Maintenance District Number 1 rate structure. In addition to these financial changes that I just mentioned above, this amendment also resolves some administrative issues, including the acceptance of the sewer and Highway 193, some minor changes to the insurance requirements for consultants, changes to the pavement processing forms, and designated unused portions of the wastewater treatment plant number one site for the county's future use. There were a few late changes that Lincoln requested in the wording and I've been asked to read those into the record, but I'd like to ask if there's any questions first before we dive into those.
Any questions by board members before the changes are considered? Have the changes been reviewed by County Council?
Yes.
And you're comfortable with what's been requested?
So the first change is on page 70 of your Board Package.
Supervisor Duran has a question.
County Council is one, one thing, but the, I would like to know whether or not any, all of the charges have been reviewed by our consultants and deemed reasonable?
Yes.
Is there a question about that?
No, there's not a question about that. So the two changes in the capital charge, one is the inflation adjustment and as Dave said in his report, that came straight out of the Engineering News and Record, which is a standard measurement tool that we use for gauging inflation. The other piece of it was the, the increase to account for Auburn's participation in the project, the oversizing of the pipeline, and that was from the contractor's bid, so that was a straight pass-through of the project costs as bid. So while I say yes, we didn't actually take those to an outside consultant and have them verify them because we were able to do that internally.
Exactly. And then, and let me clarify, I don't request an outside consultant, just so long as someone has vetted those costs and requests to make sure that they are consistent with, you know, what, you know, what the going rate is for, for those things and they're not, and they're not inflated. For those of you that are, that don't understand where we are, because it's kind of often that we kind of jump in the middle of something, we entered into an agreement with Lincoln about a year and a half ago to create a pipeline. And this project was gonna take place over a period of ye, of-- over a period of years. And during that period of years, this agreement reflects all of the different contingencies that can happen, inflation, things that we encounter when we're putting the pipeline in, overtime, administrative costs, all of those things, and we're just kind of reporting on a piece of the project that needs a little bit of adjustment. So, that being said, one of the things that often happens when we have these types of projects is that we do have costs that come in that someone has to deem whether or not they're reasonable and within, you know, the practice of construction. And that's the question that I'm asking of our folks to make sure that they are, that these costs are reasonable.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Duran. Anything else that the staff wishes to add?
I just need to read the changes in the record, sir. So, the first change will be to page seventy in your packet. This is COJA Amendment Item Number Six, referring to new Item four-point-three-point-two-two, Virginity Town Road and Fowler Road repaving. There is a new item, A, small Roman numeral two, and it shall read as follows, "Complete all repairs and replacements of storm drain culverts impacted by the project within the repavement area prior to the county taking over the maintenance obligation, including, but not limited to, final repair and replacement of existing asphalt concrete to a depth of not less than three inches per contract specifications." And then, following that, new, or changes to Item Small Roman numeral number four, Item Small Roman numeral one above will be completed no later than September one, two thousand and fifteen. All costs associated with a delay beyond September one, two thousand and fifteen will be paid solely by Lincoln and shall not increase the capital cost. Minor change to Roman numeral five, striking Item One, and now reads as follows, "Items Small Roman numeral two and Small Roman numeral three above will be completed no later than August nine, two thousand and fifteen. All costs associated with the delay beyond August nine, two thousand and fifteen will be paid solely by Lincoln and shall not increase the capital cost." What was Item Five is now Small Six, and then finally, Small Roman numeral seven, Lincoln shall, by August one, two thousand and fifteen, inconsistent with the established COJA, I'm sorry. Make sure I have that correct. Lincoln shall, by August one, two thousand and fifteen, inconsistent with the established COJA pay application process, deliver a pay application request to the paying agent, including a request for the paying agent to forward to a county fund as designated by the county the amount of four-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-five, and eighty-three-one-hundred dollars for the paving of the repavement area. And then, there's also a small change on page seventy-five, which is Footnote Seven to Exhibit Five. Second seven, the second sentence in Footnote Seven that reads, "This amount, including five-hundred-thousand dollars in contingency, use of which is subject to COJA, Section four-point-three-point-three needs to be stricken."
Okay. All right. Does that conclude the staff report on the subject?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, any questions by Board members? Supervisor Duran?
Yes, a couple of questions. Now that we've kind of walked through this piece of it, can you kind of very briefly give us an update of the status of the project?
In terms of the major components, the treatment plant pieces down at the City of Lincoln's wastewater treatment and recycling facility are essentially complete. They're in their startup and test right now, and the construction management firm is letting us know that they plan to be packed up and off-site by the end of August. The pump station at our Plant One site is complete and has been tested to the extent that it can be tested, given that the pipeline is not done and is essentially sitting idle waiting for the pipeline to be finished. There are still some follow-on improvements that need to happen at the site, but those can't happen until the treatment plan has been taken offline, so that they can demolish some structures and then start constructing the emergency storage basins and things. The last remaining piece that we're all waiting on is the pipeline. There's just under two-thousand feet of pipeline left to be constructed in Jirga Road, and then they are still working on the two horizontal directional drills under Ammer Ravine and Dodie Ravine, and they've rendered some challenges there, but they're working through them. And the schedule we got yesterday from the City of Lincoln let us know that they intend to be doing the final testing on the pump station, starting August seventeenth, and then taking the pump station, or excuse me, taking our treatment plan offline shortly thereafter.
What's the anticipated date of completion?
Final completion, actually, at this point, will likely not be till next spring, but that includes all of the demolition and all of the emergency storage basins that still need to be constructed. Those things can happen beyond the original compliance deadline of September two thousand and fifteen, or now December one of two thousand and fifteen, thanks to the extension we got from the regional.
And the increases that we're seeing in this request are fully consistent with both the agreement and the anticipated budget that we have for these types of contingencies?
Correct.
Okay. And we're still way under budget from what our original estimate for the project is?
Even with the changes we put together today, there's still seventeen percent contingency in the project.
Great, great. You know, I just want to additionally comment that this is another example of the county's ability to partner with other jurisdictions that are serious about partnering with us. Not only do we have an agreement and an understanding with the City of Lincoln, but we also found a way to bring in the City of Auburn for a future possible partnership with them in how many millions of gallons of pipe? We basically oversized our pipe in order to provide the opportunity for Auburn to possibly come in at a later date, correct?
Correct. There's an additional one-point-four million, or one-point-four million gallons per day of capacity.
And if you can imagine that, you know, it's hard enough to do a project with one jurisdiction. We actually have three jurisdictions in this project. So, I want to thank you guys for managing that, and I want to thank the Board for their continued support of this project and vision moving forward to include these other jurisdictions in projects like this. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank Tim Rundle and Bernie Schroeder, who are here today from the City of Auburn, for continuing to work with Placer County and, you know, work towards the goals that not just we as local jurisdictions have recognized, but that our partners of the state have not just recognized, but told us we need to recognize. So, thank you very much to the City of Auburn. Please pass my thanks along to your City Council as well, and I look forward to many years of working so smoothly together. Thank you.
Supervisor Morgan?
Just a huge thanks for everybody who's taken this standpoint, including our staff. Obviously, the City of Lincoln has shouldered the majority of the burden, but it's a relationship business that we're in, and you folks have done a great job of filling in where needed, particularly on the SEQA documents. I want to thank the Regional Quality Control Board, Pamela Creedon, for their leadership, but also their sensitivity to the scale and scope of this project and the delicacies. So, just a big thanks.
Okay. Any questions or comments by members of the public prior to the Board taking action? Item Six-A, seeing none, pleasure to the Board?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes?
I would like to add that a clean copy of the COJA Amendment with the changes that Dave read into the record has been provided to the Clerk of the Board.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So, I heard a motion by Mr. Duran, a second by Ms. Montgomery, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None? Thank you very much. We can now backtrack to Item Five and cover Five-A.
Terrific. Thank you. I'm Kevin Tabor with Public Works, Road Maintenance Division. This next item is awarding the contract, asking your approval to execute and award the contract with Tyker Construction the amount of one-million-four-hundred-and-nine-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the two thousand and fifteen summer hot mix asphalt overlay, and also authorize the Director of Public Works or as designee to execute contract change orders up to ten percent of the contract amount. This project includes five roads, three of them in Granite Bay, one of them in Penrin, and then, of course, Virginity Town Road and that small portion of Fowler Road that are in the SMD-1 sewer project. Funding is provided by your Board to the two-hundred-million dollars in the fourteen-fifteen budget, as well as a small portion of CSA funds, and then the funds provided by the City of Lincoln that we're parlaying into a, and it's going to be a real good road when we're done with it. We had six bids. Tyker Construction was a low bidder at one-million-four-hundred-and-nine, six-fifty. That was approximately nine percent below my engineer's estimate, so we were able to strike while the competitive bidding, bidders, bidding process was still ripe and oil prices were low. I think that's it. If there's any questions, I will be happy to answer them.
Questions by Board members? Supervisor Duran?
I just wanted to point out that Tyker is a local contractor here in the City of Rockland, so we keep in our money local.
Okay. Any members of the public? Seeing none? Pleased to the Board?
Mr. Corvall?
Motion, Montgomery, and second by Yagan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much. We'll move on to Item Five-B. Got some stuff done up in Tahoe area.
Good morning, Board. Chairman, Brian Stewart, Department of Public Works, in the Tahoe Engineering Division.
This item before you, we want to approve and award the resulting contract execution for competitive bids under one-zero-four-five-four to Q and D Construction for the construction of the Rainbow and Salmon Avenue parking lots and two bus shelters as part of the CCIP project, Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. The contract is for seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. We'd also like to authorization for the Director of Public Works to execute the contract change orders for fifty-three-thousand, seven-hundred dollars. Kings Beach project, your Board have approved the Kings Beach project a while back, and we're continuing to work on it. These two parking lots and bus shelters are part of the CCIP, and will help offset some of the parking, the changes that have happened up there on the back streets. So, there'll be forty additional, when we're all done, forty additional spots. The one parking lot is right adjacent to the post office there on Salmon Avenue. The other one is more to the west of the project, near Deer. We bid this project, and we only got one bidder, Q and D Construction, which is the current contractor on the CCIP project. But we feel like we got a good bid, and we'd like to move forward with that award. The project has been cleared environmentally, and permits are all obtained, and so we are ready to start construction, and we want to have that completed by the fall of this year. The funding is provided by the Successor Agency Bond Funds, some TOT funds, and then a Clean Air Grant provided by the Placer County Air Pollution Control District. With that, any questions?
Questions by Board members? Supervisor Montgomery?
I have no question. I just really want to say thank you to you and the rest of the staff. I see Peter here in the audience in Tahoe. You guys have done an amazing job on this project, but also really an amazing job in working with Q and D, who have performed, honestly, from my perspective and from what I hear from the local community in Kings Beach, above and beyond anybody's expectations. They've been an incredible partner in this, and so I have absolutely no qualms about a single bidding and awarding this to them, because they have just done such a phenomenal job with the Commercial Core Improvement Project. Frankly, if all our contractors performed in the way we did, all our lives would be so much simpler. So, it would be my recommendation to this Board, after having taken public comments, made any other comments, that we approve this.
Okay. Seeing no other comments by Board members? Anybody in Auburn who wants to address the Board on this item? And anybody in Tahoe who wants to address the Board on this item? Nope? Okay. Then I will take Supervisor Montgomery's suggestion as a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Yagan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you. And then, finally, for you guys anyway, Item Five-C, also a Tahoe item.
That's right. Again, thank you. We'd like to introduce to the Lower Chipmunk and Water Quality and Outfall Project. So, we'd like to approve the award and construction execution of competitive bid one-zero-four-four-seven to Burdick Excavating of Carson City for one-point-five-three-nine-six-seven million dollars. Funding is provided by the United States Forest Service and also a grant by Proposition Eighty-four of the State of California, and we have matching funds to support that. We'd also like to authorize the Director of Public Works to execute change orders for up to just over a hundred thousand dollars. The Kings Beach Water Quality Improvement Project, specifically the Lower Chipmunk Outfall Water Quality Project, is located on the south side of Highway twenty-eight at the east side of Kings Beach, between twenty-eight and the lake, and it basically treats that water that's on that eastern side of Kings Beach. We have some advanced treatment facilities that are going, specifically some jellyfishes, which is a product that we've always, we've already installed in the CCIP, which are, takes those fine sediments out of the stormwater, so that we have better clarity in Lake Tahoe with that stormwater entering the Tahoe waters. We also are doing some improvements down on Brockway Vista Road with respect to this project, which include stabilizing some road shoulders and stuff, so that those fine sediments don't get mobilized into the stormwater. Part of the project is, we have some matching funds, so therefore you'll see some county road funds, forty thousand into that, and also some Regional Surface Transportation Program Exchange Funds that is provided by the TRPA to help support this project in the matching dollars. Exciting times as we continue to work on the water quality projects in Kings Beach as each phase and each part goes, and we're really excited to get this eastern end done and tie it in with the Commercial Core Project. Any questions?
All right. Questions by Board members? Seeing none, any members of the public? Or up in Tahoe? All right. Let's pleasure the Board.
Mr. Corvall?
Motion by Montgomery, second by Yagan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much. And we can now move on to Health and Human Services. Adult System of Care Contract, Willow Glen Care Center. Morning, Mary.
Good morning. Morning, Evelyn. Happy Adult System of Care, thank you.
This morning, I have two agreements for your consideration. The first agreement, as you said, is with Willow Glen Care Center, and we're requesting that you approve an agreement with Willow Glen Care Center to provide residential treatment for seriously mentally disabled adults for the period of July first, two thousand and fifteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, for a total amount not to exceed one-million-two-hundred-and-ten-eight-hundred dollars, and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign amendments not to exceed ten percent. The dollars for this contract are, include state and federal dollars of four-hundred-and-eighty-four, three-hundred-and-twenty, and a county match of seven-hundred-and-twenty-six, four-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Placer County does provide mandated services for folks that, for fifty-two adults who really need either locked or specialized residential treatment services, and since nineteen-ninety-nine, Willow Glen has been a good partner for Placer and provided excellent coordinated residential care services. Eight Placer County residents were served by Willow Glen services during the current fiscal year, and they are continuing to learn skills which will allow them to successfully live even more independently in the future. Of the eight residents served during this time period, all remained stable and did not require a higher level of care. As part of this new contract, a new program has been established at the Willow Glen Center. It's called the Sequoia Psychiatric Treatment Center, and will be added as a new option for our, as part of this contract. It's a small sixteen-bed facility. It will also be able to draw down federal funds, which, depending on utilization, will offset some of the county contribution, and could provide as an alternative hospitalization, psychiatric hospitalization, which will be good, as well as they will be able to help with incompetent-to-stand trial population, which is really a growing population that county is responsible for in Placer. So, the fifteen-sixteen expenditure of six-hundred-thousand dollars included in the approved fifteen-sixteen budget and the proposed budget, and then the following expenditures will be included in future budgets. So, with that, let's see, the contract was reviewed by the Malhealth Alcohol and Drug Board, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, but recommend approval.
Board members have any questions? Any members of the public have any questions or comments prior to the Board taking action? All right, we're being asked to approve the contract with Willow Glen Care Center. What's the pleasure?
Second.
Motion, Holmes, second, Montgomery. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you so much. And now, for consideration, the contract with the California Institute for Behavioral Health Solutions, also for the Adult System of Care.
Thank you. So, the second item is a three-part request. It's to approve an agreement with the California Institute for Behavioral Health Solutions... It's to approve an agreement with the California Institute for Behavioral Health Solutions. We call it CIBHS. And to court, in order to coordinate the Central Region Workforce Education and Training Regional Partnership Program. This current year is in the amount of $1,014,299 for the period of July 15 through June 30 of '16 and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign amendments up to 10%. Funding is provided by the Office of Statewide Health Planning and Development. There's no county dollars associated with this contract. Our second request is to reauthorize Placer County Health and Human Services to be the fiscal agent for the Central Region Workforce Education and Training Regional Partnership Program. And then to provide, thirdly, to provide an option to extend this contract for two additional one-year periods and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to exercise the options so that the total contract amount for the three years does not exceed $2249,999, which is the dollars that are available for this three-year term. So, Placer County was authorized to be the fiscal sponsor of the Central Region in April 21st of 2009 and then reauthorized June 19th of 2012. The Central Region has been approved for another three-year term and so we are asking for continued support in this effort in order to put in place the Workforce Education and Training Program. We call it WET, Workforce Education and Training. It's supported by the Mental Health Services Act and helps to, on a regional level, augment the services that are done county by county in terms of workforce education development. There are 20 counties in the Central Region. Placer is sort of near the top of the central and Fresno is the bottom, so it's the 20 middle counties. Placer contracts with the California Office of Statewide Health Planning and Development to receive revenue for the program. It used to come directly to us, but the state changed it and now it goes through the OSHPED program. And so, we did sign an OSHPED agreement. Your board approved that on June 17th, 2014. In addition, we contract with CIBHS because we wanted to minimize staff impact and we didn't want to be requesting additional staffing for this project. So, we contract with CIBHS to provide the staff support and subcontract services necessary for the program. CIBHS has the skill and expertise to assist with the regional workforce development activities. They provide technical assistance to all counties in the mental health arena and they are also the contractors for three of the five other regions in California. I would say these regional activities have been a benefit to Placer County. It helps to augment the efforts that we have here locally and there is also some reimbursement for us should we incur any expenses in the administration of the contract. So, just a few highlights that we've accomplished. A region-wide, 700 professionals and paraprofessionals have been trained. 155 mental health first aid trainers have trained over 6,000 individuals in the region and we've developed some online educational certificate and degree programs in the region that have been a benefit to the whole region. So, OSHPED provided an additional $1.8 million for the additional three years. This contract includes an addition of $400,000, which was left over from the previous three years, so that's how we get the total of $2249,999. Let's see. The Regional Partnership is really, like I said, designed to augment what we are doing here locally and we work with the regional 20 counties to make our decisions in terms of priorities. We submit a plan and that gets approved by the state. So, of the expenditures, $1,014,299 were included in our, are needed for this next year. $800,000 was included in the proposed budget and 214, 299 will be included in the final budget. The future contracts will be included in the next two fiscal years. The Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Board did review the contract and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and recommend approval.
Okay. Questions on the contract for services with California Institute for Behavioral Health Solutions? Seeing no board members? Any members of the public? Any none? Let's move on to the board. We have a motion by Holmes and second by Wygant. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Children's System of Care. This contract with Kids First, Child Abuse Prevention and Operations of the Family Resource Centers.
Good morning again, Chairman Yule and Board Members. Richard Connect with the Children's System of Care. For more than 20 years, Kids First has effectively executed the responsibilities of the county's Child Abuse Prevention Council, delivering a host of prevention-related activities and supports to parents, educators, caregivers, and other professionals. This year, the use of these dollars helped Kids First to reach over 2,500 families, assisting them to maintain their independence and to keep their little people safe and healthy. I'm aware of one recent situation wherein a young mother was court mandated to attend parenting classes at Kids First after gaining custody of her two children. Initially, she was quiet and disengaged due in part to feeling shame and guilt associated with her court involvement. She was clearly overwhelmed and in need of parenting tools so that she could successfully reunify with her children. Eventually, a very skilled facilitator at Kids First was able to engage a mom and she soon started participating fully and by week six, she was actively engaged with her peers in successful completion of the program. She was so pleased with her mothering capacities acquired through this service that she encouraged her husband to start his own class. Together, they completed their homework assignments and by the end of the class, a mother stood in front of the group and spoke of how motivated she felt and how powerful the program had been for her. Because of this service, two young Placerites were spared the shame and trauma of extended foster care and have been successfully reunited with their family. The expenditure of $510,744 is included in the department's 1516 proposed budget. The contract is funded with $404,744 in federal and state funding, $37,000 local fees and donations, which is the Children's Trust Fund money, and $69,000 in county general funds. I'd be happy to take any questions. Otherwise, I'd recommend your approval.
Questions by board members? I don't see any questions by members of the public. All right. What is the opinion of? Motion Duran, second by Holmes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our final contract for consideration here, this is Family's First, Eastfield Ming Wong, Therapeutic Behavioral Support and Specialty Mental Health.
Thank you. One element of the county's successful approach to delivery of mental health services to young people includes a state-mandated specialty in-home crisis service designed to prevent the youth from entering inpatient hospitals or other institutional settings, which are often difficult to access and always more costly. Eastfield Ming Wong has effectively delivered these services in Placer since 2009. Under this agreement, up to 140 children each year with significant mental health challenges will receive this effective service and avoid out-of-home placements. The total contract amount of $1,635,664 is an increase, a significant increase of $903,000 plus from the prior contract. This significant expansion is necessary to meet the heightened demand for crisis-related services by youth over the last 12 months. Fortunately, state allocations for this service has also increased, creating an opportunity for Placer to reach more youth in need. We're particularly pleased that we'll be able to fully meet the need in the Tahoe area, which has been a challenge for us in the past. The fiscal year 1516 expenditure of $438,000 is included in the department's proposed budget. For your board's awareness, one of the state's associated funding allocations in this area had not been fully determined when our local budget was developed, so the additional 1516 expenditure of just over $379,000 will be included in the department's final 1516 budget. The 2016-17 expenditure will be included, of course, in that year's budget for you coming forward. The contract is funded by leveraging $105,120 local dollars, drawing down an additional $1.5 million in federal and state money, so we think it's a wise investment of local dollars. I'm available to respond to questions. Otherwise, I'd recommend your approval.
Okay. Seeing no questions? Yep. Supervisor Duran?
Yeah. Just a little bit of flesh out of this program. You know, obviously, it's going up $900,000 with a combination of our money and state money. What potential do we have for real savings here? I mean, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, had we not done this, what is the potential downside of not addressing this particular issue with, and incurring those costs for outpatient?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. The costs associated with an inpatient hospital stay or a group home placement are significant. A young person in a group home setting for up to a year could easily expend $180,000, $200,000 with significant mental health services included in that. So, this service is effective in that for approximately $50,000 or less, including all administrative costs to the provider, we're able to offset and avoid all those inpatient stay days or residential settings. So, while it is a significant increase, we are continuing to keep children out of hospital settings as much as possible and keep them out of group homes, so.
And how, do you have a number, a specific number of how many children you'll be able to reach via this upgrade of the program?
We're projecting about 140 this year. It all depends on community demand, but we'll be able to reach at least that many.
So, that's potentially 140 at possibly $200,000 a pop if we hadn't done this?
So, I think the worst-case scenario for a child in a group home is 200,000. Of course, a shorter length of stay would be less money, but there are often children and young people in care that would cost the county significant more dollars locally to match the group home placement.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions by board members? Any members of the public? Want to address the board prior to us taking action? And seeing none, we are being asked to approve this contract. Let's move on to the board. Motion Holmes, second Duran. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will move on to Public Works. This is Board Adopting Resolutions, Supporting Implementation of Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan in Folsom Lake Estates Neighborhood. Morning.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. My name is Alice Atherton. I'm with the Department of Public Works. I'm an associate engineer. What you'll see on the board ahead of you is the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. This is Placer County's program that we have right now as a document to help neighborhood communities come together and implement traffic calming improvements within their neighborhood. Let's see if the clicker's working. There it is. Okay. So, the Folsom Lake Estates community is located between Auburn-Folsom Road and Barton Road and they've seen a lot of traffic and they're concerned mainly this project is to address the speed. Although it's all public roads, their main purpose here is to reduce the speeds within the neighborhood. So, that's their location and some of these slides are just showing the nature of the roads without, throughout the community, some of the curves, some of the hills. So, Placer County has been working with the Traffic Calming Committee that was created through the program and these are neighbor, this is people within the community, this is outside of the HOA. And what the county did is we came in and put in temporary speed cushions and if you're looking at this one, just on Oak Leaf Way east of the street. And the data that you see presented before you shows the reduction in the average speed before and after, but they only have it on the Oak Leaf Way east section of the road. There's also Oak Leaf Way west, but the temporary speed cushions were only placed by the county on the east section. So, those are the results of the data. So, those were in, they were, those were put in in 2012. In September of 2014, Placer County Public Works met with the community and they discussed the results of the survey data from before and after for that limited portion of roadway within the community. And then, they discussed also how they wanted to move forward in the community to address the speed issue. So, they did a vote. All the community members were balloted. There are approximately 300 homes, residents within the community. And you'll see here, this, the first, this first exhibit shows the, there it is, shows the response of the ballot. In order for the ballot to be valid, 50% minimum of the members of the community had to respond. As you can see, the response was greater than 50% within the community. So, they are able to move forward and this shows right here that the majority of the community, just by visual, you can see that they did respond. The questions within the ballot were to replace the temporary speed cushions on that Oak Leaf Way east with permanent cushions and as you can see, the number you want to look here is at the green as we go through the slides, so you don't go crazy looking, but this is the number. And in order for an item to be approved in the community, it needed two-thirds approval vote and all of the items that they voted on met the two-thirds or greater percent. Again, installing permanent speed cushions on Oak Hill. Oak Hill is the road that cuts between Auburn-Folsom Road to the south side and this is Barton. Again, the support is 79%. Install permanent speed cushions on Oak Leaf Way West. This is the opposite side. Again, 78%. And two speed cushions on Macduff. This is another portion of road that's been an area of concern. Another valid item, speed cushions on Oak Leaf Way West and as well as Reservoir. And then, the other item was a stop sign near where there's an existing school bus stop right up here. The smaller red stop signs are the existing stop signs within the Folsom Lake Estates and the, this project includes just one additional one at that location right there. And then, this is just a representation of those neighborhood members who were willing to contribute, kind of reflects how serious they are about this project. And as you can see, there's quite a significant amount. And this question was to get a feel, Public Works, we wanted to determine how people felt about the placement of the cushions. They may vote, some of them voted, yes, I want the speed cushions, but I don't want them adjacent to my property. So, we, you know, worked to coordinate as much as we can to fit them in and we feel like we have found a good fit. And we went to the Granite Bay MAC on June 3rd with the results of the ballot of the community that was voted and the MAC voted in support, six to zero. And so, Public Works today is asking for your support as well. We did send out a letter to all the residents in Folsom Lake Estates and let them know that we'd be presenting here today, so there may be members here of the community who'd like to speak with you on this item.
Okay. Well, let's check first, see if the board members have any questions.
Oh, sorry.
Is, does that conclude your staff report? Okay. Supervisor Duran?
Yeah. Quick question. I have in District, the unincorporated portion of District 1, we have some speed traffic calming things that we put in. Can you describe, since we don't have a slide, the, what the speed traffic calming item is that you've put in?
Oh, okay. So, this is the manual, what it looks like. And so, there are various items that, within the manual and it's important, an important factor is the community chooses which items they want to implement in their community. So, it could be just pavement markings, it could be signage, it could be speed cushions, speed humps, all kinds of things. So, in this situation, they chose speed cushions and speed humps. They coordinated with the fire department and the school, which has busing throughout the community, so, and then some of the signing, there'll be warning signs and striping. But, that doesn't necessarily have to be what is implemented in other areas and that's the important part, is they decide, because it's their community.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Does that answer?
All right. Any members of the public who want to address the board on this item prior to us taking action?
Yes.
Come, I need you to come up forward to the microphone here and give us your name for the record and.
My name is Larissa Berry. I am, I guess, acting president of the Traffic Calming Committee, which has been working unofficially for eight years, officially since 2010. We've been working with numerous county representatives from Public Works who has helped, who have helped guide us through this process, which included 29 steps and we dotted every i, crossed every t. Just to let you know, we are dealing with speeds in excess of 70 miles per hour on a routine basis on streets that are posted 25. We have very challenging topography and we need this program because we feel unsafe and our children cannot use the street safely. We cannot use the street safely and it's really not safe to drive at this point in time. So, thank you. If you have any questions about the community feel, you know, I'm that point contact, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Bringing it back to the board, just, you know, historically, we as a board would find ourselves sometimes at odds when we would get requests from the public. would find ourselves sometimes at odds when we would get requests from the public, where we would then turn around to Public Works and say, okay, guys, what are we going to do about this? And I recall one such incident down on Joe Rogers Road a number of years ago, back when Jack Warren was our Director of Public Works, when the folks on Joe Rogers Road got tired of Joe Rogers being used as a shortcut between Auburn-Folsom and Douglas, and people going an excessive rate of speed down Joe Rogers Road, and they asked for stop signs. And Public Works official position was, stop signs aren't warranted there, and yet we were able to get the board to agree that we should put in stop signs and solve the problem. And so the manual to which you refer there was really the result of Public Works saying, these, the folks in the neighborhood, if they can get together and go through the various steps, 29 of them, that are required for what would otherwise be improvements of public roadways that we wouldn't voluntarily make, but those people observing the conditions on the ground on a daily basis think that they're necessary, and they might address the issue as the data clearly here shows, that manual did a very nice job of kind of codifying what the concerns were of the public, but also of Public Works in evaluating how we address these things on public roads, especially when you take into consideration emergency vehicle response times, all those other kinds of things. So I want to commend the community of Folsom Lake Estates for the work that they did in moving this through a rather large community with a number of voices, many of which are not shy about letting their position be known, and appreciate their effort to bring this all the way to the board, and I would encourage our board's adoption of this resolution. Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you to both the folks in the community who worked so long and so diligently on this, and to our Department of Public Works. I've had a number of requests in the fifth district to look at Neighborhood Traffic Management Programs, Plans, Programs, and I've encouraged those community members to contact you guys, you have always been incredibly responsive. I'm not sure if any of them have actually chosen to move forward with the process, but I think this action that we're being asked to take today really does demonstrate that there is a good process that exists, and if neighborhoods and communities are particularly concerned about something, I would just encourage them to engage us at the county, go through those 29 steps, cross those t's, dot those i's, but you know, come to an outcome that serves their communities. And I think it was really critically important that you noted that not all communities are going to have the same pieces of infrastructure installed in their community. Obviously, east end of the county with snow is going to have different needs and different things which meet or don't meet safety requirements, plowing requirements, fire response, all of that. But you've done a fantastic job on moving this one forward, and I really just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you and to encourage those communities and those neighborhoods that have concerns about traffic to engage the county, because short of engaging us, we're not going to be able to resolve their concerns and issues. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, do we have a motion? Motion Holmes and second Duran, all in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, thank you very much. All right, and our final item, fire to going to close session, is accepting our 2015 crude oil and hazardous materials by rail operations response guide.
Good morning Chairman Supervisors, my name's John McElhoud, I'm with Placer County Office of Emergency Services. With me today is Mr. Pete Nat of MC Squared Consulting, our primary consultant on this project. Today I ask that you accept the 2015 crude oil and hazardous materials, or hazmat, by rail operational response guide. By way of a little bit of background, in 2014, Placer Nevada County Office of Emergency Services were fortunate enough to receive a grant from the California Office of Emergency Services to develop a by-county focused and first responder centric crude oil and hazardous materials by rail response guide. Guide development involved the cooperation and collaboration of a host of agencies, including multiple public safety and first responder partners along the Interstate 80 rail corridor. I'd like to highlight Union Pacific, Kinder Morgan, and Placer County Water Agency, as well as several other agencies. This unprecedented collaboration and plan development resulted in this operational response guide presented to your board today. The need for this type of guide became clear in July 2013, when a catastrophic crude oil by rail incident occurred in Lac-Magantac, Quebec, Canada. That incident resulted in 47 deaths, extensive damage to the town center, and hazardous materials released from the crude oil, and the evacuation of approximately 2,000 individuals from that town and the surrounding area. As you well know, there's been other similar incidents throughout the United States, though fortunately not as severe. All of these incidents have caused great public concern with our constituents. Placer and Nevada County responded and combined to develop this operational response guide, which is specifically designed to aid first responder response for oil by rail incidents in our area, in our counties, and also mitigate the impacts of an incident as fast and as quickly as possible. While focused on oil incidents, it can also be used for hazardous material incidents by rail incidents as well. And just for frame of reference, this is the first operational response guide of its kind anywhere in the state of California, and it may well become a benchmark for counties across the state. Finally, this guide both increases first responder readiness for our counties and better prepares us should an incident of this magnitude ever take place. And myself and Mr. Nat are here, are here to answer any questions you might have.
Board members have any questions on the guide? Supervisor Montgomery?
No question, but just my sincere thanks for taking this on and putting together what certainly appears to be a great document. We're very fortunate in Placer County that we do actually have three hazardous response teams, Cherokee, Auburn, and Roseville, nicely spread out along the rail route, but I think creating a document that helps all the partners between those three spots to coordinate our efforts is putting us head and shoulders above other jurisdictions, and I'm absolutely delighted that we move forward with this and very impressed by the document itself, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments by board members and members of the public, wish to address the board prior to us taking action. Seeing none, we're being asked to accept the 2015 crude oil and hazardous materials by rail operations response guide. What's the question of the board?
Second.
Motion Holmes, second Montgomery, all in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, thank you very much. And that concludes our items for our regular agenda. We now have several closed session items to discuss. County Council will give us a preview.
The board will now adjourn to closed session for a conference with legal counsel to discuss two matters of existing litigation and one matter of anticipated litigation. The board will also have a conference with its real property negotiators to discuss a specific property in Lincoln area, Sheridan area. Finally, the board will meet for public employee performance evaluations of the county executive officer and then the county council.
All right, and then we will adjourn to closed session and report back out when we're done.
The board has returned from closed session where the items listed on the agenda were discussed.